...reviewed the Star Ledger and the Highland Park Planet on January 3rd, 2018, 2019, and was posted on the bulletin board of Borough Hall 221 South Fifth Avenue on January 3rd, 2019, and had to remain continuously posted as required by law. Fire exits are to my left and to my right. If you come up to speak, please speak into the microphone. And assistive listening devices are available. So Gary Leslie, would you lead us in the Pledge of Allegiance, please?
I pledge allegiance to the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice in all.
Mayor Permetler.
Here.
Councilman Fine.
Here.
Councilwoman Foster-Dublin.
Here.
Councilman George.
Here.
Councilman Hale.
Here.
Councilwoman Kentschohad.
Councilman Walkevitz.
Here.
Borough Attorney.
Here.
Borough Administrator.
Here.
Okay, we'll start with our council reports, and I'm going to start on my right this evening, so Councilman Hale.
Thank you very much, Mayor. I have a few remarks to make. To begin with, the Board of Health has asked me to remind everyone about a potential measles exposure for people who were at the Sky Zone Trampoline Park, which is at 600 Hadley Road in South Plainfield, on Monday, April 22nd, between noon and 5:00 p.m. I want to repeat that there's been no reported cases or measles exposure within Highland Park, but that this facility in South Plainfield may have had a number of people at it. So if you think you've been there, if you think that you might be exposed, testing is in order. Again, that was the Sky Zone Trampoline Park, 600 Hadley Road, South Plainfield, on April 22nd. So, secondly, earlier today, I attended the Middlesex County Complete Count Committee meeting. This is a countywide effort led by freeholder Ron Rios and assemblywoman Edat Lopez to make sure that everyone is counted in the upcoming 2020 census. It's a concerted countywide effort to particularly reach hard-to-count populations. I want to thank the Borough Administrator for sending their assistant, Emma Missy, to the event as well, and to make sure that Highland Park is a part of this effort. There are two things at this point that I just wanted to point out of interest. This is going to be an ongoing attempt to ensure that the census actually works. According to the presentation today, the Census Bureau is going to be hiring 1,250 part-time census workers in Middlesex County alone. These are $20 to $21 per hour jobs. They're flexible. Oftentimes, they can be at home. Sometimes, they can be at different locations. Anyone who is interested in these jobs should go to www.2020census.gov/jobs. It seems like an important opportunity for many folks. Second interesting thing that I'd like to point out is that New York University has created a database of hard-to-count locations nationwide. That's available at www.sensushardtcountmaps2020. While Highland Park does not have the hardest-to-count areas, there are some. So I think that I would encourage people to go and look and explore that. As we all know, census is a very important thing, and I wanted to commend the Middlesex County for its efforts in making sure that we do have a good count. I also wanted to make sure today that, to sort of recognize, a number of different things that have been happening just in the last three weeks with our police leadership. As you know, we have a new chief and a new captain as of April 16th, and I just thought it was important to sort of highlight a few things that have been going on just since that has happened. I think it's important to keep track of some of those things. Some of them are wonderful. A lot of them are wonderful. Some of them are still work. I don't intend this to be a claim that everything is finished with the Police Department, a claim that the work is done, but I do think it is important to recognize things that have been moving and are going on at this particular point. So along those lines, one of the things that we've been waiting for a number of times for a long time is actually a report on traffic stops by DeLacy Davis. As many of you will know, we have, working with DeLacy Davis Consulting, on trying to analyze who gets stopped and how they get stopped in Highland Park. We've been waiting for that report for quite some time, and we still don't have it. I will tell you that the reason that we don't have it is that there are two different computer systems that the police are using, and we're having a difficult time having them talk to each other. And so this is a project that Mr. Davis and Lieutenant Hamill have been working on for a long time, but I do want to point out that Chief Abrams and Captain Caballo have recently reached out to one of the companies and asked for some additional assistance in allowing for this crosstalk/crowwalking of this data. I know that Chief is interested in moving this forward. I know this is something that is important to the community. I know it's something that is late, and I know it's something that we have not done. But I think it is important to recognize that we believe that they have perhaps figured out a way of making these systems work, and the project will move forward from there. So I wanted to point that out. So a couple other things that I think are also important. Reminder that Chief Abrams and Captain Caballo had an open public meeting the day after that they were sworn into office. I think that's an important step, showing that they are reaching out for transparency. I also want to thank them and also the members of the Immigration and Refugee Committee, who have been working together for quite some time on developing a SOP, standard operating procedures, as they deal with the immigrant and refugee community in Highland Park. I think we're very lucky that we have an Attorney General in the state of New Jersey who seems to be in many respects on the same page with these issues. But Chief Abrams was instrumental in sort of rewriting this policy, and he had some great help from the Immigration and Refugee Committee. John Adler and Letitia Cataldi particularly were quite instrumental in sort of adding their voices to this process, and that's a process that will continue on a number of different ways moving forward. I also want to point out that a number of officers, Chief Abrams, Captain Caballo, Sergeant Culver, Satcho, and Officers Palumbo and DeCosta, recently attended the National Organization of Black Law Enforcement Executives, their annual training symposium in Atlantic City. The topics covered at this symposium included violence, a public health crisis, prevention, coping, and healing strategies, how to develop a diversified law enforcement agency, disparities in use of force, implicit bias, and impartial policing, de-escalation training, leadership for supervisors passing the torch. So I know that this is a long overdue training process. It is one that we hope will continue and over time, again and again. I think it's also important to recognize that the chief, the captain, sergeant, and line officers all attended this event. One of the things that we've talked quite a bit about is the culture of the Police Department. One of the ways of moving the culture of the Police Department is doing it from head to toe, so I want to again say thank you for that. Okay, so the last thing that I wanted to point out and I wanted to again recognize in terms of the new leadership is a policy that may get into the weeds to some extent or maybe not, but the policy of the Police Department has been, for quite some time, to have body cameras on uniformed officers. Through the work of Chief Abrams and Captain Caballo, that policy is changing, so there will now be body cameras on plainclothes officers in addition to uniformed officers. Their current budget also has asked for additional body cameras to be on administrative officers. So there will be plainclothes, line officers, administrative officers who are out into the field, and uniformed officers will have body cameras, is the intent. And so I think that's a significant change that did predate, to some extent, the chief, but has been led by the chief and Captain Caballo. I don't intend, again, to say that this is it. I don't intend to say that there is not a great deal of work to do with the Police Department. I just think it is important that we recognize that some steps are being taken very clearly and very directly by this new leadership in just a very short period of time. There's a long way to go. They recognize that as well, but I just wanted to point out and say thank you for those steps at this time. Thank you very much.
Thank you. And Councilman Hale, thank you for attending the census meeting. I just want to iterate how important being counted in the census is to Highland Park because funding that we receive on a state and federal level is based on our census numbers. So when you are approached by people asking you to participate in the census, I hope that you will. We are talking also about forming a small group of people to help reach into the community to ensure that more and more people do get counted in the census. I think it's very important. Councilwoman Walkevitz, do you have a report?
Yes, just briefly, Mayor. Thank you. We had a tremendously big weekend this past, and the rain did not deter the runners of our annual 5K. We had over 500 people registered, and more than 400 people still showed up to run in the race. It was a little bit chilly. It was super wet, but everybody had a great time. And as you may know, the proceeds from the race go to benefit the following essential institutions: the Highland Park Police Department, the Highland Park Fire Department, the Highland Park First Aid Squad, the Highland Park Rec Department, the Highland Park Public Library, and our Main Street Highland Park. I'd like to thank everybody for coming out, and especially to the runners, all the volunteers that helped make it a success, and we also had the street fair following right after at 11:30, and all our public works help. Thank you. Thank you, Don. And it was a great day. The street fair was also, even though there was a lot of rain, the rain tapered down in the afternoon, and it was still a great turnout. And especially, I'd like to thank some of the sponsors to the 5K: St. Peter's University Hospital, Oxford Realty Group, Kinetics Fitness, Over the Moon Toys, Blue Horse Restaurant, Strub Law, Geico Insurance, Oral Surgery Group, the Law Office J Weinberg, Girls on the Run of Central New Jersey, Borough Council President Phil George, The Cook and the Carpenter Bake Shop, Wayne's Wash Grill, Kessler Rehab Center, Morde's Kosher Bake Shop, Stop &amp; Shop of Highland Park, running it softly LLC, Photo Plicity, Penn Stop Coffee Roasters, Raritan Valley Roadrunners, the Law Offices of Harold Gier, Bailey Grill, Morgenthau Realtor, and Hambro Mitchell Attorneys at Law. Thank you to all of them. And in case you didn't know, that this race was dedicated to a dear friend who passed away earlier this year. Franco Jurisic passed away from pancreatic cancer. He was an advocate for pancreatic cancer research, and we're still collecting funds for the Pancreatic Cancer Action Network. If you'd like to donate in his memory, please go to the MainStreetHP.org website, and there's something on there. Also, if you'd like to get your racing results, as the 5K in Highland Park is a certified race, you can go to racingNJ.com/files/2019_HP5K. So thank you for everybody. And a couple of things coming up: planting days on Thursday, May 16th, and Saturday, May 18th. Meet at Raritan Avenue and help join us in planting flowering plants in the planters along the avenue. And as you may know, that our farmers market opened early last Friday, and it's going to be open every day through December. On May 31st, please don't miss the Berry Festival. And on June 1st, our Highland Park Outdoor Movie Theater begins with Dragon Slayer, so join us for that as well. Thank you very much.
Thank you. Okay, Councilwoman Foster-Dublin, do you have a report?
Very brief one, Mayor. We seem to have, I would like to talk about what's been happening in the teen center. And last week, they did a college readiness program. They had some help from Rutgers University to help to get our seniors prepared for college, the do's and the don't. It was a great program that they had last Friday evening. And they have also been working on many things. One is, they have received a few grants, and one of the grants that they applied for is to visit the African-American Museum, the American Indian Museum, and the Holocaust Museum in Washington. And so they've applied for these three grants, and the teens will have an opportunity to go and see these three museums. One of the grants that we are looking for funders or we're looking for sponsors for is to visit the Alabama, the Vincent Museum in Alabama. I think that's a great one. Anyone who want to contribute to getting our kids an opportunity to go and visit this museum, please, we're looking for contributions and we're looking for grants to have them go and see this. As pertaining to the kids again, this summer, there are workforce development, there's job opportunities that they can apply for through workforce development. So if anyone is listening and is looking for a job, a summer job, they can look at workforce development website and see what jobs are there to be had. Memorial Day is coming up. I just checked, it's the 27th that we're going to be having our Memorial Day Parade. So we're asking everyone to come out. There's an early parade at 8:00 in the morning where we in town, we meet at different locations, come out and support, and then please come out and support the big parade that we have at 11:00 in the morning. With that, I'm going to yield some of my time to the Police Department because I'm going to ask Acting Chief Abrams to come up and just give us the overview of the stops and everything else, what's on the police plotter at this time, and I'll use some of my time to that. While he's coming up, I'm going to talk a little bit about the Equity Commission. I met with them last week, and they're going to be meeting with the Acting Chief-Captain and also Chief School to talk about how they can have their input and their voices be heard as the new Acting Chief and Captain go forward. Also, the Human Relations Commission will be meeting with them, and the Immigration Refugee Commission will be meeting with our new Acting Chief and Captain, and also with your Mentor Chief School.
This microphone works today. Can everybody hear me?
No.
It's on.
It's on.
It's closest you can take it to your mouth.
So we tried to give a brief overview of things that we've done over the last month call-wise. The department has actually 1,457 calls during the month of April. Doesn't sound like a whole lot, we could take just 30 days, but if you kind of break it down, you get an idea. This covers everything.
We can hear you over here.
This covers everything we do. Is that better? Everybody hear me? Is that going to take off the recording? Okay, cool. So we've covered 1,457 calls this last month, these last 30 days. My 15th day, I think, is chief, so I'm trying to get the hang of it, so bear with me a little bit. Majority of our calls are ambulance calls, 77 of them, 36 car accidents, 21 noise complaints, six criminal mischief, 20 disputes. These numbers might not sound like very interesting or a lot, but it kind of gives a snapshot of the town as a whole. I'm working on kind of going over the calls, what we report, how we report it, to give everyone who hears this report every month a better idea of what this actually means. Some towns, you know, they don't put this stuff online. I'm looking to do something like that as well, to give everybody a chance to kind of look at this and be a little bit more informed. Officers are working hard to keep everyone safe. We're in the process of hiring. The department's moving up. I hope you all see some changes coming forward. I hope you see the department more out in the streets. I hope you get a chance to talk to us. We're trying to make ourselves more available to everyone. In the past, it wasn't always the case. We're really trying to change that, and we could use your help. So if you see us, say hi, wave. If you want to chat, have a question, see an officer on the road, as long as they're not working, if they're not tied up with something, feel free to come over and say hello. Okay? Thank you.
Can you also, a question came up today from, I got a question from a resident, and they wanted to know, what is the procedure for a domestic violence call? What are some of the things that would be normally done when someone comes out to make a call, determine what the call is?
So a DV or domestic violence call is something we handle a lot, and it runs a pretty wild range of things, from an aggravated assault to sometimes they get called for domestic violence that it turns out to be just an argument. Everyone is unique. They're all handled in a specific way, unique to that situation. Those are one of those calls where it's not fair to treat every situation exactly like the one you just went to, or like the one you think you're going to go to in the future. There are certain things where we have to make arrests. There are times where mandated by the state, it's one of the few call types that we don't have as much discretion on as others. If there's certain boxes checked during our investigation, we have to make an arrest. If there's not, we have our discretion still, and other times, we go to a call that's reported as domestic violence, and we get there, and it doesn't fit the category of domestic violence at all. It is simply a verbal argument. You're allowed to have an argument with your roommate, with your spouse, with your kids, and it doesn't rise to the level of domestic violence.
Is there any kind of, if it rises to the level of domestic violence, what are the agencies that would be called to provide service slash assistance to the person in need?
Again, those are all unique to the case. There's some county agencies we can use to provide shelter, provide assistance, to provide help. Sometimes with a domestic violence incident, one party or both parties can be entitled to a temporary restraining order, in which case we'd involve the county courts or our local judge if it's after hours. Again, since they're all unique and they're all different, you know, some of these services are just for adults, some are just for kids, some are for parents and a child. Sometimes the unfortunate service we have to use could be DCP and P.
What is DCC and P?
Division of Child Protective and Permanent. It's the old DIFIS. They changed their name to DCP and P. If you have questions on a call, and it's a domestic type call, typically the officers are going to try to separate everyone so everybody can talk safely. If you're concerned, if you have a question about what happens next, ask. The officers are more than happy to talk to you, help you through the process, if you're going through it, and try to listen to what you have to say, and give you the best direction that they can. Keep in mind, they're not judges. They can't change law. They can't grant a temporary restraining order on their own. That has to go through a judge, things of that nature. But the officers obviously are definitely there to help you. If you have those kind of questions of what comes next, what to do next, how do I do the next thing, they can help you all the way up to the point where it'd be considered legal advice. We're not allowed to give you legal advice. At that point, the officer would say, you know, you really should contact an attorney for that kind of information.
Would there be any, what instances would they call it, like Women Aware? You know, Women Aware is a group that helps women that are in need or distress. At what point would that be called in?
Women Aware would be contacted if the female involved in the case, and she requested it. She wants that kind of service, she wants to talk to a counselor, things of that nature. We can make a contact with Women Aware. Some people would like other agencies that, I can't think of the names off the top of my head, but there's other agencies we can use as well.
My colleague mentioned.
Yeah, I have a specific question. What would happen, is there a protocol if a restraining order is violated? Like what are the, are there certain things, as maybe, as maybe Councilwoman Foster-Dublin mentioned, would you automatically call in for assistance, or is that, as you said, per incident?
Well, violation of restraining order is pretty specific, and state law requires to find the actor who violated the order and to place them under arrest. They will go out to the county jail and sit there until they see a judge. That could take a day, two days, three days. So they will have to sit there. That's one of the times where we lose our discretion, and it's an automatic arrest on the other end. If the other party decides they need some kind of counseling help, we can help with that. Oftentimes, that's not the case. At that point, once they know that the other individual's been arrested, they're incarcerated, they usually kind of stop their interaction. If they want more, it's always available, but we can't make people get counseling if they don't want it.
Okay. On another note, I would like to find, if you could just give us a quick update. My colleague mentioned some training that happened in Atlantic City, which I'm really happy and excited about that was done, the normal training was done, and a number of persons from the department attended. Could you just give us a quick update on, I know you don't have all the training, you probably don't have it all on top of your head, but what training has been done since? I know you're 50 days on the job, so I'm going to give you a break in case you could provide us some more.
We work with the town, we're able to increase our training budget. There's a lot of free training out there, but free training isn't always the best. There's a lot of training mandated to do by the state. We have to keep up with certain topics. Any new Attorney General guidelines that come out, we have to get training on. Anything like pursue use of force, we have to have yearly training on. But we're also able to get officers out there to be experts in certain fields. We sent two officers in the last two months to crash investigation. This last month, we had 36 motor vehicle crashes. The more officers that I have that are trained to be crash investigators, the better reports they do, they're able to do it faster, they're able to help people more completely, so we get people out to there. Tomorrow, we're having two officers go to, I don't know if you ever heard of it before, it's called verbal judo. It's a de-escalation training where you can use your words to kind of calm somebody down. We're sending two officers to that tomorrow. I'm attending with the captain, a small, Leadership of Small Law Enforcement Agencies. It's a two-day class given by the National Chiefs of Police Association on how to run a small department, and the unique challenges you face when you have a very small pool of officers that draw from to assign to different duties. Trying to think of some of the other ones. Oprah, things on Oprah, the Open Public Records Act, sending officers to training for Oprah so they can help the public better when they're releasing information that we know what we can and can't put out to the public in an effort to try to open everything up a little bit and get more information out there. It's very important that the public knows what's going on with the Police Department, but it's also very important to us that we protect the rights of the residents. There's a fine line there, you kind of have to walk, and sometimes, you know, in an effort to protect maybe someone in town, you don't quite follow the rules right for Oprah, or vice versa, in an attempt to acquiesce to an Oprah request, you give a little more information than you should, and now you're violating someone's privacy rights in town. It's a really tricky area, and it keeps getting bigger and bigger, in addition to the Freedom of Information Act, which combines with the Oprah rulings. It makes it tricky. So I think we have four officers going to that later this year, and we had two earlier this year go to training for that. We're really trying to open up. We're trying to let officers find trainings that they're interested in. If you have an officer or any employee who's interested in something, they're going to do a better job at it. We're trying to open it up, let them find some trainings they want to go to, while we run through a list as we get notifications of trainings from different agencies. On the horizon, we're looking at more de-escalation training. We're looking at implicit bias training. We're waiting for some of those results, like Councilman Hale said, we've worked with DeLacy Davis. I want to see the results of that so we know how to go forward. With that kind of data, with that kind of report, if we have that, I can move the department forward based on that data, and we can start to fix any of the glaring discrepancies that we find, and more importantly, we can find the things that would have been hidden if we didn't have worked on, things that might have escaped our radar. So while we've done a lot of training so far this year, the last month, we probably sent 16 officers to different trainings, a month and a half, but we have a whole bunch more things on the horizon that we're looking to do for. We might not be able to get to it all based on budget, time, availability. At the same time, we want to get all this training in, we want to make sure we're not causing overtime, we're not shorting staffing on the road so the officers are still here to do their jobs, but we're trying to make up for some lost time. So I hope, I hope that helps.
Thank you very much. I'm going to be following it with you as we work to put stuff on, make more transparency in our website, to get the training as they, as we put them in place and as people go through the training, make it more visible.
I think the captains are putting photos of our certificates on our Facebook page. I don't have Facebook, I'm starting to learn how to use it so I can be a little more out there. But I think the captains have put in some pictures of the officers after training with their certificates and things like that, so if you follow our Facebook, you can kind of see some of the schools we've been to.
Thank you. Thank you.
Okay, thank you. Councilman Fine, do you have a report?
Yes, thank you, Mayor. As the council liaison to the Highland Park Free Public Libraries Board trustees, I was surprised and upset when I learned this past Sunday, May 5th, that a picture book program featuring a children's book titled He Is for Palestine, which includes the letter I for Intifada, and its BTS supporting author, Dr. Gobharm Khachi, was scheduled for Sunday, May 19th, at our library. On the morning of Monday, May 6th, I had an opportunity to speak with the president of the Library Board of Trustees. He informed me that a decision had been made to postpone the event. He also told He also told me that in line with the policy of the Library Board of Trustees, for removing the book from the library shelves when a complaint is made, the Library Board of Trustees would engage in a discussion regarding whether a program that was scheduled to take place should be canceled at its next meeting on Monday night. So as I was saying, on the morning of May 6th, I had an opportunity to speak with the president of the Library Board of Trustees. He informed me that a decision had been made to postpone the event. He also told me that in line with the policy of the Library Board of Trustees for removing the book from the library shelves when a complaint is made, the Library Board of Trustees would engage in a discussion regarding whether a program that was scheduled to take place should be canceled at its next meeting on Monday night, May 20th, at 7:30 PM. At the meeting, which will be open to the public, the Library Board of Trustees will have an opportunity to openly discuss amongst other items on its agenda, whether the picture book program should be canceled. Personally, I do not believe that this picture book program with its BDS supporting author should have been scheduled at our library in the first place. However, since it was scheduled to take place, I think that the Library Board of Trustees has made the right decision to hold an open public meeting, to explain how and why this program was scheduled and to have an open discussion about what course of action it will take in regards to the program. That is my report this evening. Thank you, Mayor.
Thank you. Council President, do you have a report?
I have a very brief, a couple of announcements, since we have an agenda, I'll wave my report. First of all, as everyone should know, the plastic bag arrangements will be in effect on May 1st. I'd like to thank Rye for anticipating Fage 2 minority going to paper bags, if anyone has noticed. They skipped the plastic phase and went right to paper bags, recyclable paper bags. In talking to a lot of the merchants, some people are complaining, the most common complaint is that people don't have bags for their trash and their bathroom trash and their dogs, but they're not complaining about the environment, so I think it's going to be very successful. Remember, the second phase will begin to affect July. The second announcement is rather important to town, there are flyers, colored flyers here on the desk, I asked you to take one, you can scan them to log in and sign up for the Millbrook cleanup. This is the biggest Millbrook cleanup that we've done in the last 10 years. It's multiple groups and multiple towns. There's going to be a group forming at John Marshall School on Cornell Street in Madison that's just beyond our border. As you cut down from DuPont Lane to school there, the Millbrook actually runs by there down to New Jersey, out to Middlesex Ward. And also the main group down in Johnson's Park Grove too, that's the one across from relatively New Pond and Dekin area. We're looking for volunteers, volunteers and donations and, you know, for food and cleanup and so on. I invite everyone to come and I'll reserve the rest for next week, thank you.
Okay, thank you. Borough Administrator, do you have a report?
Just very briefly, Mayor, a couple of people have been asking about the results of the deer survey or the deer count we had done, I guess, early last month, and unfortunately, we got, the company we worked with on that recently sold or bought, I should say, and so we're kind of caught in that transition, so I'm very disappointed to say I don't have the results yet, but we will, as soon as I get my hands on that information, we'll be meeting with the folks at the Division of Fish and Wildlife so that they can advise us on kind of what our options are and which all leads up to that community meeting, we promise that we will continue to work toward, but absent that data, I think we'd be having a kind of incomplete meeting and kind of view of our options. So I'll keep you posted and sorry to say that we've been delayed, the good news is I did not, or the borough did not pay for this, so, so we haven't, we're not out for money, however, we are not in receipt of the report. And I believe that's all I had and I was going to do a quick Mill Creek promo, but Councilwoman George did that, but I would encourage everybody to come out on Sunday and help out with that.
Okay, thank you. Borough Attorney, do you have a report?
No report, Madam Mayor.
Okay, just a couple of quick things, I just want to remind everyone that the PSENG Solar Field Research Project has started construction. It's very exciting for us. Not only are we making use of some otherwise unusable piece of land that we have here in Highland Park, the research generated by this project will benefit us and the rest of the state of New Jersey as they collect data to inform us on what happens with solar energy, when it comes from the sun to the panels, to the batteries, and then to the grid. The borough is also making some revenue on this as we're renting the facility, the land to PSENG to collect this data. I am also going to yield most of my time because we will be doing a presentation on the budget as we come to a discussion on the budget later on in the agenda. If anyone has not picked up a copy of the colored presentation that the Borough Administrator will be making, it is on the table here. All right, so now we enter our first 15 minutes of public discussion. Each person gets three minutes to talk. We're going to ask the Borough Administrator to time us and to please be respectful of the other people who want to talk by sticking to the three-minute timeframe. So if you'd like to speak, that would be five people at three minutes each. We will have public comments available time later on in the meeting. Okay, so if you're ready, please step up to the microphone, give us your name and address and tell us what's on your mind.
I don't know, it's not working.
It's not.
The green light is on, but.
The green light is on, but it's not.
It's not working.
Yeah, can you get close to it?
No.
It is for the camera though, right?
We're supposed to be here too.
Well, yeah, but even if it's not working, you should still, for the camera.
You can use mine, I think you'll be better.
All right.
There you go.
Good evening, Borough Council, I am Kalidra Hadhazy, resident of Highland Park. Do I have to give my full address?
Yes.
Okay, 512 South Second Avenue. I'm here representing my mom, who is resident of South Seventh Avenue. I understand on the Borough's agenda today, we will be discussing the proposed zoning overlay and I would like to say that many residents are here tonight in protest. It's my first council meeting and I'm here in protest of being excluded, in protest of being ignored, and in protest of being misled. On April 10th, residents that live in close proximity of Buckwoods was invited to this very chamber and presented with a proposal zoning overlay for the development of four acres of land, land that has gone undeveloped for decades. We were shown a rendering of two, three and a half story buildings that towered over existing single-family homes. We were told by the mayor and the Borough appointed consultants that the development was court ordered and that the judge mandated 75 units of multifamily housing to be built on this land. It was explained to us by the mayor that the 75 units of multifamily housing would satisfy a portion of the borough's affordable housing obligation as mandated by the Mount Laurel Doctrine of 1983. And it was repeatedly suggested that this, the proposed overlay set forth by the borough, was the best course of action against the quote-unquote greedy developer. Nowhere in the presentation did the borough acknowledge the passive attempt to include residents in the process of crafting this overlay. Nowhere in the presentation did the borough give answers to why the zoning of four acres of land originally zoned for single-family housing, housing was changed in the first place. And it was only after several demands for clarity did the mayor finally acknowledge that the 75 units was a maximum limit and not the absolute number of houses that can be built on this land. That entire experience left me and many other residents bewildered and angry. A forum to discuss the overlay implies that residents have a say, that their input matters, but clearly it does not because the overlay had already been written and here we are a month later protesting the vote of its approval. Had you allowed us to participate in this process, you would have commended the borough for its effort to right past wrongs with the creation of more affordable housing, but pointed out that the neighborhood in which this housing was to be constructed has an abundance of affordable housing. There are currently 784 units of apartments spread across 141 buildings in 1.9 mile radius between South Sixth Avenue and Crowell's Road. Many with average rents of $1,650 and many that would qualify as affordable. So let me be clear, we are not rejecting the construction of new affordable housing, but the manner in which the borough plans to achieve it. Had the borough reached out to residents, particularly those on South Seventh Avenue, am I over my three minutes?
Yes, yes. You can come back for the second portion if you like.
Thank you.
Is this one working at all? I think I can be heard on pass.
You could get a chair, you could bring a chair over so you could be comfortable and speak at the mic.
You still can hear?
Yeah.
Okay. I'm passover, I was deputized, can you hear that now? On passover, is that better?
Yes.
I was deputized to come and this kind of feels trivial.
Excuse me, I need your name and address?
Oh, sorry, Ruth Matilsky, 109 South Fourth Avenue, Highland Park, New Jersey, 08914. So I was deputized to come in and honestly, this seems trivial compared to what came before me, but here it goes. Water sewer bills have added fees for paying online even when paying from a checking account. This doesn't happen when we pay other bills. Recreation centers, sports, et cetera, forms cannot be submitted online and there's no borough option for paying online. A few months ago, I came in and said that there needs to be a better way to contact people when taxes are due. Most people who don't have mortgages are senior citizens and if you aren't reminded when your taxes are due, chances are you could forget, the older you get, the more likely it is that you will forget. And in this town, we have a lot of intelligent people who might be willing to volunteer to help the town do something about the online notifications. So the other thing is that the backup for not paying your taxes on time really shouldn't be that your name gets put in the paper and your overdue tax is sold to a credit company. And now, I'm really glad I came to this meeting because I would like to mention that besides worrying people about the measles, it would be very useful if people had the information about vitamin A deficiency and how that contributes to serious cases of the measles. This is really important information, you can Google it, but it should go out there along with alerts about possible measles. And the other thing is that I am really disturbed about the program that might be canceled at the library. I am an observant Jewish woman who supports BDS, a peaceful protest way, and I think this is wrong and I'm going to make sure I attend the May 20th meeting.
So I just want to get you some answers. Borough Administrator, would you be able to address the few things that just.
I think I, I'm forgetting if I'm missing anything. I heard you mention the rec center. I'm pleased to inform, one of the things where I just signed a purchase order for was we're going to be offering rec programming online, not just to be able to pay, but you can also sign up, more like a shopping cart experience like we're used to, you may have seen that experience any rec programs in other towns. So we're, it's going to take us a little while because you have to feed in on your programs, but that's coming, so that's good. The fees for online payment, if you pay through our website, we have to pass along transactional fees from the vendor because we have to collect the money we have to collect. If you pay through your bank online, like if you have the borough as a payee, they may send a paper check to us, but that shouldn't cost you anything, but you have to budget adequate time for that to get to us because not everybody's bank delivers their funds electronically to the borough within a couple of days. So I caution everybody to kind of know your own bank, for example, my bank doesn't speak nicely to the borough system, but well as far, a lot of the main companies will if you're set up properly in the system. If you want to know more about how to do that, you can talk to the tax office. And then your last point regarding late payments on taxes, I did hear you say that last year and I'm particularly interested in thinking about before the tax sale, to your point, how we can do a better job of reminding and getting the word out, but just know that we, you're not going to go into a tax sale or you can become delinquent meaning you owe us late tax money, but you won't be put into a sale during the course of the year that happens at the end of the year as part of the last tax bill that's due. So I just wanted to make sure you were clear, but I'm very supportive of that. Part of the problem is reaching people, we're trying to collect emails and phone numbers for people as we go, but we don't have the resources to call 500 delinquent accounts consistently, so, which can be the quantity that we're talking about when we're talking about a tax sale, but I'm open to talking about ways we could do better.
So what about reminders? And we get, we have a little, we have a place in upstate New York where we get reminders for tax filings too.
Do you need a mail reminder?
However you want to do it.
Emails are easy, it's, mailings are more pricey and difficult, so the problem is if you're referring to seniors, we have a range of folks that use those emails.
So I'm going to ask if you.
We're wasting the time, right?
Yeah, and the last thing I wanted to say and comment to what you remarked, I want to make it clear that the library and Library Board is a separate entity from the borough and the mayor and council here and I would encourage anyone with, no matter what perspective they want to bring to the library to attend their meeting and express it.
May I just make a comment about the measles as well? And I'm sorry, I should have said that after Councilman Hale's report. Also, if you're a woman that's seeking to get pregnant anytime soon, you need to make sure that your vaccines are updated. Fortunately, before I had my children over 10 years ago. my blood work showed that my Rebel vaccine had expired and wasn't effective anymore on my body. And the doctors immediately said, please, you know, stop immediately. You know, get your vaccine, get up to date because it can have tremendously negative effects for everybody involved. Thanks. Thank you.
I'm going to try to work without the microphone. And if you can't hear me, just let me know. My name is Susan Edmonds.
Susan, I'm sorry. Please use the microphone. We're not getting a good result out of that mic.
It's hard to tell when you're on this side of the room because you can hear voices. My name is Susan Edmonds, and I live at 440 Grant Avenue. And I am the Lower Raritan Watershed Partnership's designated streamkeeper for Millbrook. And I want to first express my gratitude to the Borough of Highland Park for its support for the Millbrook Mother's Day cleanup, which comes up this coming Sunday at Mother's Day. And so I wanted to thank House Member George and Mayor Bill Miller and Borough Administrator Terry Levert and their assistants and the Department of Public Works, all of whom have stepped up to make this cleanup work. It's Mother's Day. Many of people have other plans for Mother's Day, but the earth is also our mother. And a stream cleanup is a way to get to know your local stream and to have some fun. It's a treasure hunt. And to do good by preventing trash that would otherwise make its way into the Raritan River and into Raritan Bay Ocean to keep it, to get it back where it belongs. Hopefully to a recycling center, but probably most of it goes to a dump. I should say landfill. Anyway, there are two main sites. It's very helpful if you sign up ahead of time, and the Flyers will allow you to sign up on the LRWP website. But if you can't sign up, just come to one of the two sites. One is Grove Two in Johnson Park at 10 o'clock on Sunday morning. And the other one is at the John Marshall Elementary School in Edison. At the John Marshall School, you'll be dealing with Millbrook as it begins. It's above-ground route through Huggins Park and Edison. And if you clean up in Johnson Park, you will be cleaning up around Millbrook just before it goes into the Raritan River. And so I think that the Flyer has all the information that you need, but if you have any doubts about anything, contact the Lower Raritan Watershed Partnership, lowerraritannwatershed.org. And thank you very much.
Thank you, Susan.
Hi, my name is Michael Borden, 207 Seventh Avenue. I'm going to commend Councilman Foney for bringing up the issue of the library event. I know it's not a borough event, but there is oversight with liaison here, and tax funding goes to that. And I think the major issue a lot of people had was not that a book was introduced to the library, it was going to be a book read to children in a children's format. And one of the pages is titled "I feel fatality..." Yeah, "Intepata," which was a violent uprising where people were blown up in buses, pizza shops were blown up, synagogues, stagers. It was an acute little protest, as the book portrays. And that's what I think refills the danger about it. Everyone's for freedom of speech. Everyone's for free public library, diverse views and expressions. But a children's event is not a place for this type of conversation. So I commend you, because we find that the mayor and anyone who walked in for the sake of the meeting or being attending the meeting are made to my... Do I have any time left? Because I don't know if Hayden's...
Two minutes.
Can Hayden speak? Can it work by two minutes?
If you go right to him, we have one minute, three minutes. Yes, three minutes.
My name's Hayden Shulman, 411 South Fifth Avenue, Highland Park. I'm also here to talk about the Buckwoods issue. I'm the primary author of the online petition, Change.org. So far, we've collected nearly 50 online signatures as well as 67 hand signatures. I'm just going to say that just about the worst way to plan for the future of our town is through court embalts. So I want to give a shout-out to our borough for holding talks with the developer, if the rumor is true. I think a negotiated solution where everyone's interested in the account is a far better way to go than just have to settle at the... I mean, be forced upon by a court. I'm also going to say that I'm not against affordable housing. In fact, I grew up in affordable housing. Guardian Manor's apartment, Trail Ohio, Google is still there. The Mount Laurel Doctrine, however, calls for affordable housing to be integrated into the fabrics of our community, not isolated to one area of town. The South Sixth and Seventh Avenue already have the highest concentration of affordable housing. Loading this neighborhood with even more affordable housing may be superficially illogical choice. As one of my good friends in town, Wu Xiaoyun, a neighbor, would say, "You already got two big buildings here already. Why the heck to go on?" But it's a wrong choice and entirely against the intent of the Mount Laurel Doctrine as well as the spirit of Highland Park. Last night, I watched a six-minute NJTV video on YouTube that talked about the creative ways that towns around New Jersey are meeting their affordable housing obligations. For example, the Whittaker Township using the federal, state, and local funding to build Jacob Fannie. So this 20% set aside for new development is not the only gain in town. In fact, there are 10 different categories, according to the video, to do affordable housing. Things like group homes, buy downs, etc. So I urge everyone to watch it. On YouTube, just search for "NJ Affordable Housing." I think if we put our heads together and come up with... We can come up with unexpected good solutions. That's been scaring in our faces all along. Thank you.
Mr. Gross, we have to end this portion of the public comment, but there will be another one later. Did you hear me?
I heard.
Okay. Okay, so we're going to move on to the next point of business. Okay, Clerk, would you report on advertising the overlay zoning ordinance with consideration of passage on final reading by title?
An ordinance of the Borough of Highland Park and the LSX County creating a multifamily residential overlay zone was duly advertised with consideration of passage on final reading by title and affidavits of publication or file. The ordinance was also posted and made available for public inspection as required by law.
May I have a motion to take up the ordinance on final read by title?
I'd like to make a motion and table the ordinance to...
No, no, no. We're up to before a public hearing.
Okay, so a motion to take up the ordinance.
I'll start it.
Thank you. I'm sorry for the confusion.
Okay. Roll call, please. No? Oh, so we get the... Okay. This... Excuse us, folks, but this is an unusual situation for us. Okay, so before we go into public hearing, I'm going to ask the borough attorney to explain this ordinance and what we're doing procedurally.
Thank you, Madam Mayor. And as you just heard, this is a confusing issue and one that I thought we ought to explain a little bit before the public hearing this evening. As was mentioned earlier, the borough is in court and has been in court since 2008 over defining how it's going to address its affordable housing obligation. Each town in the state, as was mentioned earlier, has an affordable housing obligation. So we were sued a couple of times by what we call builder remedy lawsuits. We settled those lawsuits. And now we have to deal with what's called the Fair Share Housing Center to come up with affordable housing that is credited towards the obligation of the borough. And by that, I mean that the units that get credited towards the borough's obligation have to be units which are deed-restricted and required to be lived in by folks of very low, lower, moderate income. And the de facto, or the fact that there are affordable units in town, and we know that there are a lot of affordable units in town, they don't count towards the state obligation unless they can be deed-restricted and counted by a group called the Fair Share Housing Center. So we've been in court since 2015 with the Fair Share Housing Center. And as a part of that, the Buckwoods property, which is four-and-a-half acres of vacant land privately owned, was targeted or looked at by the court and the Fair Share Housing Center. And they looked at that as a developable piece of property that could provide some affordable housing in the next cycle of affordable housing, which will be coming up in 2025. And the discussion about Buckwoods then went to the court and went to the judge who's overseeing our affordable housing compliance plan, the plan that we need to provide. And as a result of that, as a part of the settlement with the Fair Share Housing Center, Buckwoods was mentioned. And Buckwoods was mentioned as a site that could sustain multifamily housing, not wiping out the single-family residential zone that's not being repealed. This is an additional option called an overlay zone. It's in addition to the underlying zoning. And this would permit up to 75 units of housing. Of the 75 units, if they are rental houses, 15% of those would have to be built and rented to folks of low, very low, moderate-income housing. If these units are for-sale units, 20% of the units built would have to be sold, deed-restricted, to very low, low, moderate-income housing. So that kind of sets the stage for why Buckwoods was focused upon. As you probably know, because you live here, there's not a lot of vacant, developable, open land in the Borough of Highland Park. And there's certainly not a number of sites that are 4.5 acres in size. That, in our opinion, is why it was focused on by the courts and by the special master. So right now, we're in the process of doing this overlay zoning. And the ordinance tonight, which was for a public hearing, and those wish to speak about the ordinance would be given the opportunity, was the first ordinance that was introduced by the council to address this obligation. The council introduces an ordinance on a public hearing this held tonight, aware of the fact that our most recent discussions before the affordable housing initiative was launched by the Fair Share Housing Center and the courts had us discussing and negotiating with the owner the building of 144 units of multifamily housing on this property. So when the court and the court master recommended not more than 75 units of housing on the property, the borough understood with a vacant piece of property, with the insistence of the court and the court master, that this property should be eligible for an overlay zone. And that's what would be done if the ordinance is adopted. Since the ordinance was introduced, we have been continuing mediation sessions with the special court master overseen by the judge with the Fair Share Housing Center and the owner of the property. And as a result of that, we are continuing to adjust and fine-tune that ordinance so that when the final ordinance is finalized, which it hasn't been yet, we will have an ordinance that hopefully will work and will hopefully address a number of the concerns that many of you will probably raise tonight and will probably raise again on the 21st of May because the second ordinance we introduced is in the same situation. These two ordinances initially introduced are going to be revised. As a result of those revisions, my recommendation of the governing body tonight would be to hear all of you who want to testify about the ordinance. That's fine. But to table a vote on the ordinance and continue the hearing until July 2nd. Now, what happens on July 2nd? You will see the third iteration and the final iteration of the Buckwoods ordinance at a public hearing on the evening of July 2nd. The court order we have allows us to make this final revision, hopefully a better revision, to the ordinance by the end of May. As soon as we have the ordinance drafted and ready for introduction on the 11th of June, that ordinance will be put up on the website and made available to anybody who wants to see it. And that would be the final Buckwoods ordinance with the final numbers in there in terms of density, height, coverage, the areas that are not to be disturbed, et cetera, et cetera. So the ordinance tonight is not really the final product. It's not going to change significantly. In other words, the 75 units is something that appears in the court settlement we have with Fair Share. It says not more than 75 units. You can imagine an owner, if they want to do this, are going to do 75 units. And it will be built in two buildings closest to the end of Sixth Avenue. No building can have more than 40 units. So if you break it up to 75 and 75... I'm sorry, total of 75, you can have 35 in one building and 40 in the other. But those things, those fundamentals, are not likely to change. But some of the other issues related to the ordinance will change. And that's why tonight, after the public hearing, and you have your comments, my recommendation would be that the council not vote, but rather entertain a motion to continue this public hearing until July 2nd. That's when you'll see... Well, you'll see it beforehand because we're going to post it. But that would be the opportunity to comment on the final, final ordinance before the matter is acted upon by the council. We have a hearing in court on Friday, July 15th, on this ordinance and on the settlement with Fair Share. And that's when the ordinance has to be completed and presented to the court. That's the deadline we have from the court. So that's the update on the status of the ordinance. Your comments are welcome tonight, but we wanted you to understand that this is not going to be the last ordinance that you see. We will share that last ordinance with you as soon as it's available and welcome you back to comment on those on July 2nd. Right now, we just wanted you to know, so you weren't misled, that there will be another iteration of this proposed ordinance. Thank you, Madam Mayor.
Thank you. And at this point, I would open the floor for a public hearing on this ordinance. Mayor, before you do that, one quick question for clarification. In the 75 units, how much of it will be affordable, of the 75?
It depends. If it's a rental project...
Yes.
15% of the 75 units would be affordable.
So 12?
12 units. If it's an ownership unit, it's condominiums, that they're being sold, 20% or 15 units would have to be affordable. The rest of them would be market-rate units.
Now, this open session is for public hearing only on this ordinance.
I understand...
I need you... I know you were up here before, but I need you for the tape to say your name and address.
Kalidra Hadhazy, 512 South Second Avenue. I understand the borough's affordable housing obligation, and I understand the efforts that the borough has made to fulfill that ordinance. For example, the New Marywell Properties has 30 affordable apartments in 190-unit building. What I did not hear in the council's explanation of the ordinance is any opportunity for public participation in crafting the next draft of this overlay. Also, what has not been presented to the residents are any proposed plans that the developer put forth for how that company wishes to construct that space. I think that the residents are not objecting to the development, and they are not objecting to affordable housing. Not a single person has said that. What we are objecting to is being left out of the decision-making process. What we are objecting to is being completely shut out of having any say in how this building is constructed, how high it is, and how it fits into what is an undeveloped area. People are concerned with a building that towers over their homes. People are concerned with the fact that there's only one point of egress in your plan that has one way in and one way out. People are concerned that South Seventh Avenue still remains separated from South Fifth Avenue and that your plan does not open up that road. There are emergency service vehicles that can come in, for example, if someone in the new proposed development needs emergency services. What if there's a fire? I speak for myself and I know a bunch of other residents when we say we would appreciate a lot more transparency in this process and a lot more participation. It feels very disingenuine and very disrespectful to just dictate to people what is going to go in their literal backyards. People who have... People who have lived in this community for decades and for some didn't even know that this was private property. They thought that this was public land until they saw bulldozers pushing trees over in their backyard. Did they even know that this was a private property and that the borough had been fighting with the developer for decades because they have been left out, left out of this entire process? And I think this is an opportunity for Highland Park to show that it can truly be inclusive and include residents in this process. Thank you.
My name is Herb Gross, and I'm going to try to make this very brief. Later this month, on May 27th, is Memorial Day.
Mr. Gross, I hate to do this, but this portion, this is not the public comment for any topic. This is, we have to keep this just to the ordinance...
Well, you denied me my right to speak before, and you told me to come back now.
No, no.
Now, I'm coming back now, and now you're telling me I can't speak.
Mr. Gross, you know I always want you to speak. I just want, this is not the second public hearing, this is not the second portion of public hearing. This is only the portion that has to do with the ordinance that was described. You can come back when we have the second part of the open public discussion.
Okay.
Thank you.
I don't like this way. Do we do this every time? Hi, Dan Stern Cardinal, Harper Street. So just a few things to start. I've been, I'm not like an expert in housing or anything, but I've been reading a lot about housing policy since our last meeting where we talked about this. And I just want to share some information that I found based on the available data. And for some of these questions, there was a lot of data, and for some, there just isn't that much. But what we know, the first thing is that with very few and very situation-specific exceptions, higher density, and by higher density, I mean anything more than single-family detached houses. Higher density doesn't hurt the property values of single-family homes in the immediate neighborhood. Under certain situations, it can actually enhance property values. On net, apartment residents pay higher taxes and have lower costs for municipal services than residents of single-family households. And there is a lower car use per unit for apartments by 40 to 80%, depending on the time of week. The smallest difference is the weekday morning peak hour, it's about 40% difference. Saturday peak hour, there's an 80% difference where single-family homes generate more trips than apartment units. And if you do the math based on how many single-family homes fit in this area compared to how many units are planned for the two buildings, it comes out to significantly more trips for the single-family homes as far as the traffic impact would go. So on net, if you take all that into consideration, apartment residents actually subsidize single-family homeowners in terms of things like municipal services, not the other way around. And if anybody wants sources on any of this information, I can give it to you. I have it on here. So if anybody just wants it, catch me after. So all that being said, I just have a couple of questions about the specifics. First, I want to, I want to say I'm happy that it seems like we won't get like new mansions or another development of luxury townhouses that are going to mostly not sell. It doesn't seem like that many over by, that ever have sold so far. And a bunch of vacant houses would actually depress property values of the surrounding neighborhood, so it's good that that's not going to be there. I do have questions about how this new development is connected to the surrounding neighborhood. So correct me if I'm wrong, but my understanding is from Sixth Avenue, there'll be a road and sidewalk connecting it to, I forget what that little road is, and then at the corner there, it was President Justin Hallow with Sixth. It'll be road and sidewalk there, is that right?
Mansfield.
I'm sorry?
Mansfield.
Mansfield, yeah. So it'll be a road and sidewalk into the development there. And then, if I'm reading the ordinance correctly, it seems like it'll be at the top end, at the northern end of the development. Like where Sixth Avenue just continues south here.
Yeah.
Yeah. And then, on the other end, if I'm reading the ordinance correctly, right now, it's situated for a pedestrian path down to like where Graham would connect with South Seventh. Is that correct? So it's cars and pedestrians on the north side, pedestrians on the south side to the seventh side of it. So I ask about the connection specifically because my biggest disappointment in reading this ordinance is that it doesn't better connect the two surrounding neighborhoods. This development is a major opportunity to integrate two neighborhoods that have been separate since the South Seventh side was developed. Those two neighborhoods have always been separate, and that is by design. And it's contributed in a major way to the residential segregation in Highland Park. I'm not going to be the guy that has my laptop up here, but I can show you a map that shows the distribution. Talk to me after if you want to see the map. And my point is that we have an opportunity here to do a, make a major gain in integrating the two neighborhoods to decrease the segregation. And this is critical because a bunch of our other concerns as a town are downstream of housing segregation. We can't fix bias in the police department if we maintain housing segregation. And this plot of land, as we heard a few minutes ago, is one of the few undeveloped but developable pieces of land in the borough. So we need to use it to its fullest to connect the two neighborhoods. So I'm actually very happy that this is not the final ordinance. Over the course of the revisions, if at all possible, I urge you to make a road on the south side connecting the Fifth Avenue side to the Seventh Avenue side. And the road goes, so Sixth Avenue connects, I guess Graham would be down there. If at all possible, connect those two neighborhoods so we could actually integrate them instead of maintaining a boundary. As it's constructive, all we're doing is moving the boundary a block south rather than actually integrating those two neighborhoods. I think, well, honestly, I think that's more important than the nature of the buildings there, is connecting those two neighborhoods. And I'm afraid that the ordinance, as it's written right now, doesn't accomplish that.
So I'm going to ask the borough administrator and the attorney to see if we can consider something like that as we go forward with the plans. You could speak with the planner?
I mean, I have some thoughts, but it's...
Can we just also explain just a couple of other things, though? Please, yeah.
One of the ideas was to keep it in natural habitat. Whatever, you know, we're trying to, we're trying to minimize the environmental impact by, you know, making it three and a half stories, by concentrating the building on the northern side of Sixth Ave., instead of sprawling it out, which had been recommended by the developer, and we said no. So to leave part of an area that, so the direction that we were going in was to keep it in a natural environment, put in hiking trails, or actually have the developer put in hiking trails, cap that region, disturb it as less as possible, cap it and put in hiking trails. And that's been what we've been talking about for, what, 10, 15 years with that? So just as backstory. So I don't think it's a bad idea to discuss anything further, but just as backstory. Thank you.
And also, Jim, I was going to ask you, do you remember when we first started talking with that developer in those open meetings? What year was that? Because you were at the meetings with us.
I don't remember what year.
Do you? Five years ago, easily? When we did the presentations?
Remember the presentation when we went in 1344?
Yeah, that was at least, that was about five years ago.
Five years ago, okay. I just want you to that as...
Thank you. I just, just a couple of quick things kind of in response to that. So one, if we're putting like a pedestrian kind of hiking trail, like the one that's further south by Donaldson Park, that's already going to disturb that area. And the second thing is we're putting a hiking trail in that only connects to one side. We're not solving the problem, we're exacerbating the problem by putting a public amenity to only one side, only the either the fifth or the seventh side neighborhood is going to use instead of addressing, if, as the ordinance is written right now, the pedestrian trail on the south side only goes to the south seventh side. It doesn't also go, it's an L mountain through that bottom part. It doesn't, it doesn't lead to the fifth side, it only leads to the seventh side.
Is that a drainage issue?
It's, I don't know what the exact issue is. It's just, the ordinance right now specifies that it connects to Graham on the seventh side. And so putting that in there, that's just adding another public amenity that only one neighborhood on the side gets to use and the other side doesn't. It exacerbates the separation rather than undoes the separation. So I want to just again urge everybody, if at all logistically possible, to put a connection straight through to connect those two neighborhoods. Thank you.
Could you please state your name and address?
Jim Lappens, South Seventh Avenue. Those remarks from the previous gentleman were interesting. And, you know, but I'm sure it's possible to find other, you know, viewpoints online. You could bring up anything. But what I would like to think about that is, I don't have anything against renters, but it seems like for the spirit of Highland Park, we're looking for people who are invested in the community and, you know, have, want to be here in spirit rather than just temporary rest. But anyway, I want to get to a few things about the picture that we, that we overlay. I want to get, you know, if anyone has ever seen the property, it's not really a nature preserve. I just want everyone to understand. People talk about hiking trails, they talk about a nature preserve, like it's some sort of beautiful natural wonder. It's a dump. And unless there's some sort of commitment to cleaning it up, talking about hiking trails is hot silk. You know, it really needs to be thought of like in a realistic manner. And, you know, I'd like the idea of connecting the two neighborhoods together. You know, I think that's a good idea. But what I think the surrounding community is most concerned about is that 75 units just seems too much for that small area on a dead-end street. It seemed like it would actually be too safety issues, as people mentioned before, with emergency vehicles, and also people zooming up and down the street, which is used by children trying to get to part of the school and the teens. It'll lead to traffic congestion because at the end of South Sixth is a one-way street. And so people are going to try to bypass it by going down Fifth or Seventh. So there's a lot of safety issues there and quality of life issues as well. The other thing that the surrounding people are concerned about is the size of the buildings. People keep on saying three and a half stories, but let's be realistic, let's be real, and let's, you know, be honest. It's four and a half stories when you consider the parking. Four and a half stories is going to tower over the surrounding community. I can't see how that is going to be a positive effect on property values. If you look at the senior buildings, which are, you know, they, again, they tower over that area of South Fifth and South Seventh. And I'm not sure if that has a good, that has a positive effect on the property values in that area. So I just, I'm just urging the council to consider these issues. Number one, the height of the building. And number two, the amount of units. Both seem excessive. Thank you.
And Jim, do you want to mention that some of the things that you mentioned, like the traffic, et cetera, those issues will have to be addressed by the planning board before any development could occur there?
Good evening, Maureen Mullian, 46th and South Seventh Avenue. So I just want to thank the borough for hearing our concerns tonight and for bringing the plan to us in the first place. I do want to stress, though, when I saw this plan, that I thought it was a proposal, and now it sounds more like it's what you had in mind as your final or close to final decision. From my perspective, living in this neighborhood, it's far too compacted and high-rise for the nature of the neighborhood, even though there are a number of buildings on Sixth Avenue that are taller. As you're getting down into Fifth and into Seventh, it is going to tower over us. I'm not pleased with that at all. I would be happier with, personally, I would prefer, rather, that it were spread out further down. And I concur with Jim's statement about how this is a dump for decades. It was a dumping ground. So a nature preserve, it's not. Even, it affects my property, the things that I find in my yard. So putting buildings down, spreading it out and having it lower would probably be, would be nicer for the neighbors. And we are not against development. We are not against affordable housing. I am very concerned that it's all concentrated in one part of town, though. And that, from my perspective, I see other places in town, and especially for those that need affordable housing, being closer to mass transit seems to make more sense to me. Especially, we're looking for people to be able to move up and make a better lives for themselves, to be able to get jobs in the city that pay more maybe. And also, just, please don't, I don't know where I can get into stats about apartment buildings making property values higher, but I can tell you that my property value has not bounced back since the last recession. Anytime now, we're going to be hitting a next recession. And I would like to see some properties sold in my area that bring the comps back up. Okay? So there's a lot of people in the neighborhood who are already poor, let's not make them poorer by devaluing their residents. Thank you.
Thank you.
I'll just make a few comments. The data that, the claim that the Ann made regarding the property, I mean, the apartments in town are actually paying more, property taxes is a very curious one. Because the last mayor before Gail Mitter, I forgot her name, what's her name?
Before me were two gentlemen.
Or maybe it was you, I don't know. I just read that the mayor specifically said that in our town, we have too many apartment buildings that...
That wasn't me.
That wasn't me, but maybe it was a freaking number there. That build too many, I mean, that pay far less property taxes, and we don't have the single-family houses to make up for that.
What's it mean, so I don't know.
Right, okay. The other point I want to make is that it sounds like the affordable plan is that we are doing, still doing the same, the conventional way, basically. You're building, new building is set at like 30%, 20%. So we are only talking about like 15 affordable houses. For that, you're going to build 75 unit, high-density building in this area. As I said in my last remark, that, you know, there are other creative ways, not even creative ways, but there are other ways of doing affordable housing without having to build high-density buildings, just to, just to get that small percentage of houses into our town to meet the requirement. And I would urge the council to consider other possibilities as well. I mean, in this neighborhood, we're definitely should, shoulder more than our fair share of affordable housing. Okay? That's a given. But I do urge the council to consider other ways as well.
Thank you. And we will.
Hi, Dan Stern Cardinal, Harper Street. I have just some exact numbers here because, again, there have been data collected on most of these questions about neighborhood engagement among renters versus homeowners. And I mean, and again, if anybody wants like the primary resources where I got these, I can give you the list. Just talk to me after, and I'll just give you the authors and titles and publications and check for yourself. So, so apartment residents are twice as likely to socialize with their neighbors as owners of single-family homes, 33% versus 17%. Apartment residents are just as likely to be involved in, the term is structured social groups, like sports teams, book clubs, that kind of thing. It's 22% for both types of residents for sports, 10 for renters for the other type of groups, 11 for homeowners for the other type of groups. Apartment residents, let's see, for identifying closely with the town or city they live in, it's 60% for apartment residents versus 64% for single-family homeowners. And then, oh, there we go. And then, as far as interest and engagement in politics and national affairs, it's 66% for renters versus 70% for homeowners. The only number where there is a significant difference is... The only, uh, number where there is a, a significant difference is, um, apartment residents lag in, um, always or sometimes miss one voting in local elections. It's forty-seven percent, um, for renters versus seventy-eight percent for single-family homeowners. That's where there's a big difference. By all those other ma- uh, measures, the renters are just as engaged as the single-family homeowners. Um, I also just want to say that in terms of like healthy and responsible, um, de- high-density development in an area that is zoned for single-family homes, Highland Park actually does like a really good job with this on the south side in general. Um, just going from like where I walk my dog, just within, uh, you know, a mile radius of where I live on Harper Street, you've got the, um, within a few blocks of my house, you've got the Lafayette School, um, I don't know if that's apartments or condos. There are a couple, um, three stories, like mid-rise apartment buildings similar to what's being proposed here. There are two, uh, larger buildings down, uh, I think Donaldson and First, and then one down on, um, on Adelaide, the, the taller, that I think are both six stories. Um, there is, uh, a, a row of row houses on the corner of First and Harper that, uh, I just love, um, because it's so weird having like a little slice of Philadelphia right in the middle of Highland Park. There's two garden apartments within two blocks of my house. The idea is that integrating all of these different types of housing in single-family-zoned neighborhoods means that anybody who wants to live in those neighborhoods can live in those neighborhoods regardless of their means. And that is the best way to construct a healthy, well-integrated neighborhood, and that's what we should be aiming to do throughout the rest of town. And I just want to say as far as accomplishing that with this proposal, the way to do that, right now, it's actually connected to the South Fifth side by road, not the South Seventh side. Um, so it doesn't really contribute to connecting those two neighborhoods, and it also doesn't add to the density of apartments, uh, above Sa- on South Eighth and above, because again, it's not directly connected by road to that neighborhood. It's connected at Six and then dumps you right onto the Fifth Avenue side. So I, I think it's progress in getting higher density on the, the South Fifth side, where it is one of the largest areas on the south side where there are no apartment buildings. If you go from like, uh, I don't know the names of the cross streets, like if Mansfield down to Donaldson on the south side from like Third to Fifth, there's no apartment buildings in there. So like, that's a healthy thing, but again, it only works if you connect it to the other side, like I said before. So that's like the big thing. Again, last thing I want to say is that if anybody wants any of the primary sources for the numbers of citing, just ask me, I'm happy to provide them to you, I have them right here. Thanks.
Thank you.
Well, again, of course, for example, I agree by now, but, um, I appreciate Dan's sentiment and, uh, the data that you're providing, but I would challenge you that that data is not specific to Highland Park. Um, in Highland Park, where we do have a renter, a majority renter population, where we do have very large apartment complexes here, and particularly, particularly on the south side. Um, the south side is really two separate communities. There's the southwest side and the southeast side. The southwest side starts at South Adelaide and goes to about South Fifth. The southeast side starts at South Six and goes to Crowe's Road. These are two very distinctive, very different neighborhoods, and anyone who's driven through Highland Park can tell you that. The homes on the southeast side have not enjoyed the same property value valuation that the rest of the town has. A lot of people have bounced back from the recession of two thousand and eight, but the southeast side has been very slow to, to realize those property values, and for some people, they are still underwater in their mortgages. I would also challenge Dan, I'm sorry, but there are some very large apartment complexes on that side of town. For example, Orchard Gardens that has over two hundred units, and while that, they create, um, an abundance of affordable housing with their, uh, rents averaging at sixteen hundred and fifty dollars per month, um, they make over four million dollars a year in rental revenue and paying only three hundred and seventy-five thousand dollars in property taxes. And so if you do the math, that's about eighteen hundred dollars per, per unit per year. So that's, anybody who's a homeowner in this room knows that their property taxes are not that low. And our neighbors, regardless of whether they're homeowners or renters, are no less entitled to public resources. They are no less entitled to our roads and their children are no less entitled to our schools. So I'm sorry, but while that might be the case for other cities, bigger cities, that is not the case for Highland Park, our very small town. So that's number one. Number two, the constant, we need to maintain this environmental area and create these hiking trails, I'm sorry, but it's just a load of nonsense. There's a lot of people who live on South Seventh Avenue who do not enjoy having to drive all the way to South Third to get to the park, because that is the closest entrance to the park. If you live on South Seventh Avenue, you can't just drive to a park that is miles, not even miles, just like feet away from you. That's not fair. And to make this about, um, you know, preserving this open space, listen to the residents that you purport to represent, and they're telling you that they don't want this, that they are actually not interested in preserving an area that was historically a garbage dump, that was historically environmental waste, and we would like to have a road that connects these two places. We would like to stop having this area that has been historically racially segregated. A lot of the development that happened in Highland Park happened between the sixties and seventies, um, yeah, and referring to apartment housing developments. And I understand that the borough didn't have, uh, affordable housing obligation then, and I understand that a lot of your affordable housing obligation doesn't apply to this pre-existing housing, but I do implore you to look at the neighborhood for which this affects. I implore you to look at the property values of the homes in the neighborhood that you would like to put two towering buildings in their backyard. No one is objecting to the development. We're not anti-development. We're anti-buildings that tower over everyone's house. We are anti-having a street that continues to be a dead-end, that can be a traffic nightmare and potentially very unsafe. And we are against the continued segregation of our neighborhoods. It's an ugly history that Highland Park has, and unfortunately, this development continued that very divisive, very discriminatory step forward.
Hi, I'm Dan Dormin, 423 South Fifth. In terms of, uh, access between Seventh and, and Fifth, um, it's going to be, it's imperative to take a look at what exists there. Graham runs into someone's driveway on South Fifth, so there would need to be made some accommodations if you're looking for that. Also historically, when the bike path between South Fifth and the apartments, um, was made, the original proposal wants to have a road, so in fact, the two, um, two sections would be, um, would be connected, and so that people in the apartments would have good access to, uh, to Donaldson. So now it's, you know, you have it as a pedestrian, like, and the proposal was a proposal by, um, by residents. I don't think it came to the council, but it was brought to the council. Um, the other thing is, in previous times when, um, uh, the developer attempted to develop this area, one of the concerns was something with the planning board, but one of the concerns was the fact that, you know, was no way for, um, a fire engine to, you know, to get around there. So this overlay, and any revisions, um, are proposals by the borough, but when can we see a plan from the, um, developer?
Well, and also, um, it has to go before the planning board, as I stated before. Also, so, um, so that's where some of the traffic issues and the turnarounds do appeal to us.
But when will we hear any proposals from the developer? Does it come after our ordinances?
Well, the, the, the concept plan, which you see up there, which has one entrance, right, is something that the borough has been helping design and trying to keep the development away from the entire parcel. We've seen earlier this year what they had proposed to do with a bunch of small town homes around the perimeter of the entire parcel, and a three-story apartment building in the rear, in other words, in the southern part. And from comments that I think we've received, that the governing body can certainly speak for itself, but which I've heard, uh, up to this point, was that an effort should, should be made, once the property is cleaned up, the owner of the property has to clean up the property. He's already filed for a remediation plan with the Department of Environmental Protection. Concrete slabs that are there have to come out. Anything that's polluting the property, he or they have to clean up, and, and then they could put fill back in, and then they could build on the property. But we had understood that one of the objectives of this ordinance was to try to leave as much of the back part of the property going down towards the river undisturbed or re- re- reforested after the pollution was removed. And we're hearing tonight a little different comment from other people, which is good, that maybe that's not your concern, and the concern might be to have roads go up, you know, in different directions and connect both Seventh and Fifth, and, and, well, that's fine, we're making notes about that, we'll take that up with our planning professionals. But candidly, I mean, I've been here at every meeting, this is the first I've really heard folks advocating a series of additional ways to come in and out the rear of the property, the northern end of the, the southern end of the property, and, and, and not really caring about trying to preserve as much of that property in the back and get it reforested. It's never going to be like it was, but it could be nice with, uh, with the landscape plan and the tree planting under a tree ordinance and so on. But, uh, we'll, we'll take all of this into consideration.
So Borough Attorney, the question that she was asking was, when would we see plans from a developer, and we're nowhere near that yet, right?
No, the, the ordinance would have to be adopted, setting forth the general outline of what you could do. And then the developer, if they take advantage of the overlay, would come in with a set of site plans for how they would develop the property. Twenty sheets worth of how they control the stormwater runoff, the traffic, how the landscaping would be installed, how, et cetera, et cetera. And then that plan, once deemed complete, would go to the planning board, and all of you would have an opportunity to come and speak again about the specific plan that the developer would advance, and that would probably not occur for some time until the ordinance was actually completed. But it would have to be a plan that was built around the ordinance which this governing body would adopt.
So that the developer would be, um, setting forth a plan that would be the two apartment buildings that isn't the overlay?
Yes, yes. That, that's part, that's part of the fundamental footprint of the way that the governing body has approached this, to pull the development to the end of South Six, to require that there be two podium buildings, it's called, which would be multifamily, parking underneath, and, and as described before, some way to get around those buildings would walk to the rear of the property.
And that, that plan, just so you know, was based on community input we've gotten over the years.
So, just to repeat, um, in terms of the idea of connecting the two, uh, Seventh and Fifth, we need to take a look at what exists now, what impact that has on existing houses. And, uh, the other is that concern with the neighbors about the height of the property.
And I think that's something we're trying to address in the next plan.
Yes.
Hello, everybody, I'm Rob Bolzoff, looking for Thirty-One South Seventh Avenue. I've been involved in this fight for eighteen years. Have contributed to the legal fund, I bring all our assembly people, our state senator, I bring two D-Day. I want to praise the council for the work that they've done.
Can you speak into the microphone, please?
I'd like to praise the council for the work that they've done. I know the mayor has shown up in court a lot. I know that our township has spent over five hundred thousand dollars in legal fees fighting development here in Highland Park. And that number matters. If we raise property taxes, that's another senior citizen who can't afford to live in their house. If we don't raise property taxes and squeeze the budget, that's another disadvantage that we can't send to summer camp. I'd like to see as much of the area reforested as we can, I would like to see it winded to our neighborhoods as best as I can. I don't want to see any walls, but I want to thank you all for your work. Thank you.
Thank you. Okay, um, if there's no more public comment on this ordinance, we'll move on.
I'd like to make the motion to table the ordinance to our July second meeting.
On second.
Yeah.
I do roll call.
Councilman Fine?
Yes.
Councilwoman Foster-Davlin?
Yes.
Councilman George?
Yes.
Councilman Hale?
Yes.
Councilwoman Welkowitz? I'd just like to say those were interesting comments that we heard, um, and I think that we're going to pursue a discussion on them. Thank you. And, uh, yes, I'll just.
Okay. Dan, would you report on advertising the cap rate exception ordinance to consideration of passage on final reading by title?
Now, under your ordinance to exceed the municipal budget appropriation limits and to establish a cap bank, was duly advertised to consideration of passage on final reading by title when activated, this publication or file. Ordinance was posted and made available for public inspection as required by law.
May I have a motion to take up the ordinance on final reading by title?
So moved.
Any public hearing on this? Seeing none, um, may I have a, um, resolution to adopt or reject an advertising ordinance on final reading by title? Motion?
Check this.
Okay. Roll call, please.
Councilman Fine?
Yes.
Councilwoman Foster-Davlin?
Yes.
Councilman George?
Yes.
Councilman Hale?
Yes.
Councilwoman Welkowitz?
Yes.
Clerk, would you report on advertising the public hearing on the twenty nineteen budget?
The twenty nineteen Highland Park Municipal Budget was introduced and approved on first reading on April second, twenty nineteen. A summary was duly advertised in the Home News Tribune on April twelfth, twenty nineteen, with the public hearing scheduled for May seventh, twenty nineteen. Copies of the budget were mailed available to the public in Borough Home and Highland Park Public Library.
May I have a motion to open the public hearing?
So moved.
Second. Okay, before we, um, do the, uh, the, uh, roll call on that, um, Borough Administrator, um, would you please give us a short presentation on the budget? There are copies, if you have not received it, up on the table here.
And I'm going to use my big voice, hopefully that'll work for the taping, uh, because I can't talk and sit down. So...
Do you want like a clicker?
I would love a clicker. In fact, every time we do something in here, I think, and then do nothing else. You have one. But briefly, and, uh, Mr. Hulstappo gave me a good intro to the municipal budget and his comments, uh, final comments on the buckwheats matter. So I'm going to present an overview. The handouts are there, all the slides here are going to be there, as well as on, up on our website, and you can always ask the questions, um, during the public hearing or offside if you want to ask any questions. So I'll try, it's been long, so I'll try to hopefully focus us where we need to go, but then I can pine for it. So... Yay, thank you. Awesome. Just make sure we don't steal it.
It's always good to have professional tech help.
Yeah, so, so in a nutshell, uh, I'm going to, this is an overview high chart of all the tax dollars that the borough is responsible for collecting. And one thing to keep in mind is, the borough and the tax office collects taxes on behalf of all the entities, the schools, the municipality, the county, and the, and the library, there's a statutory minimum amount that we must raise for our public library. So for example, our total tax levy is forty-eight million, one hundred and sixty-nine thousand, four hundred and nineteen dollars. That's what is this, this pot right here. And it gets divided up, sixty-two percent goes to running our schools, uh, twenty-six percent go to running the municipality and all, all the various functions. I'm going to talk in more detail tonight about And I'm going to talk in more detail tonight about the municipal budget, because that's what we're responsible for. 10% goes to county services like parks and roads, sheriff's office, all those seven things, as well as a 1% tax. 1% of the pot goes to an open space tax in the county that gets distributed. And I mentioned the library statutory minimum. The borough also contributes additional funds to the library beyond the minimum. We can talk a little about that later. So I guess my takeaway slide for you is while you're getting your mail from the municipality, the borough, we're responsible for collecting this $48 million plus dollars. But 26% of that pot is what's really running the municipality. And so, and just another way to think about that, looking at an average homeowner, what they pay. And in Highland Park, the average homeowner does pay a high tax bill, $12,000 and change a year. Average being based on what a tax assessor tells us, the typical assessment is at town. So for us, that is, if you're curious, $144,299 is the average assessment, which isn't the market value, that's the assessed value. And I'm not prepared to really dive into that one right now. So essentially, we're talking about $1,000 a month is what the typical household pays in taxes in Highland Park. Okay? And again, what that translates per month for schools is about $622. That pays for the teacher, that pays for the buildings, that pays for the lights on, the school attendants, the office, all things in, it's about $622 for that average homeowner in Highland Park. A similar stat, just to put it into perspective, is about $113 for the county. And the new statutory minimum for the library is about $10 a month, just putting it into perspective. And lastly, what we're going to talk about, or I'm going to talk about a little bit more, is the municipal share, which amounts to about $265 for the average assessed house in Highland Park. So that's kind of just trying to create different ways to think about it. And so this is the municipal budget pie chart. And so our municipal budget, the amount we spent or have appropriated in the 2019 budget is $16,318,759.22. And that's what's being, that's what's been introduced, okay? It's available at the clerk's, you know, waiting to be used. And the largest pot, piece of the pie, goes to public safety, but that includes our police, our dispatch, our fire, the municipal court. All those services are in that public safety bundle, kind of for this.
And that's the royal blue square.
I guess, I'll point over here. So that's our largest wedge in the pie chart. That doesn't include, I should point out, some fringe and statutory things like pensions, which will be covered in this pie, piece of pie over here, or insurance, like health insurance, and workers' compensation. That's over here in this pie. It's hard to slice and dice departmentally for this purpose, like, to be fair, I presented this way. But just to put it in perspective, if I throw in police and fire pension payments, that percentage goes up to 41%. So it's a significant. So, but with that in mind, just to put it, again, put it into a similar perspective as what we were talking about when we were looking at the overall levy, the average homeowner in Highland Park pays out of their tax bill over $3,184 towards the municipal share, okay? And so that equates to an average monthly cost of $265.35. I put that, I put that on the other side. So what does that mean? What is 28% public safety mean? That comes to $74 a month for all those services that we get. While we want to look at public works, which has been bringing, which includes picking up garbage, recycling, bulk, taking it to the dump and paying for the dump to take it, to paying for the recycling to get recycled, all in, and keeping the lights on in the borough buildings and streetlights and all of that stuff, is $42 a month, okay? Just to the average household in Highland Park. And then everything else, and that's why I put in this order, everything else in terms of general service and administration is about 19%. And that would be my office, administration, finance, the clerk's office, recreation, aging, I mean, you name it, everything else, code enforcement, we got a code enforcement person here, that's all in that. And so you're looking at $53 a month for the average household to provide those services. And then those statutory costs, meaning basically pension, FICA, Medicaid, unemployment, those kinds of things that we must provide, is 11% of the budget, or $29 a month to that average household, and so on and so forth. And we have debt and capital improvement costs, which $27 a month. That's what pays for our resurfacing our roads beyond what we get through state aid, as well as building improvements and upgrades and other capital programs like redevelopment and like the construction of the teaser. So those are things that, kind of how that breaks down. And last, and obviously, we have our municipal library, where I mentioned before the statutory minimum, but the borough over the years has allocated additional funds out of the municipal budget. 6% includes the statutory minimum, just to be clear. And we give in addition to that almost 118% over the statutory minimum to help run the library. So that's, in a nutshell, and there's other ways you can slice and dice, but this was the one that I thought kind of presented in the picture, how the money gets allocated that the borough collects for its operations. Just check my notes to make sure I didn't get any other strokes. So the last, on the municipal budget, this is a very high-level snapshot of the bigger budget document. We're looking at, again, total appropriations, meaning the amount we're going to, proposing to spend, $16,318,959. And that is an increase over 2018, by about $681,000. But I wanted to spend a minute to explain what could cause that kind of an increase. And I, in just four areas, I can come up with almost $500,000 worth of expenses that essentially are not discretionary, beyond just, you know, what our salary, contractual obligations through our various unions and our other employees. We have debt service payments we have to make that were up by almost $250,000. Pension payments that were up by almost a little over $100,000. Recycling costs, which we're now paying to have our recycling taken care of. We used to make money on recycling. Now, it was net neutral, and now we're spending money every year and not, prices going up, especially as these market forces haven't been addressed in terms of recycling market. So that's additional $65,000 at least that we're budgeting for, for that cost. And we also had to budget for some tax appeals, and the amount is $60,000 over. So right there is a handful, just an example of the kinds, these are not frivolous discretionary things, these are things we have to pay for, and they go significantly towards explaining that increase. Just really quick to give you an overview of our anticipated non-tax revenue. I mean, we do have revenue sources beyond the property tax. And so we're envisioning earning approximately 3.2 in revenues, 3.218, and it was 3.293 in 2018. There's a slight dip in there due to what we realized in 2018, and we can anticipate more than we realized without some special permissions to do so. So that's, so that's a little bit down. However, which makes the amount we need to raise with the property tax about $529,000 more than prior year. So that's this column over here. Our total assessed value is essentially how much the borough, in a nutshell, is worth in terms of you added up the assessed values of all the properties. And the good news is there, that we did see some new development, and our overall value did go up by about $6 million. So that helps offset some of the increase, because we have added assessment. So I guess my grand finale when it comes to the municipal budget would be to explain that, in a nutshell, when we're looking at that average household that I mentioned earlier, that $12,000 worth in the year, you're looking at, with this municipal budget, the municipal portion only, about a $96 increase over last year on your annual tax bill. So that's kind of how this all boils down. So I'm just trying to put it into some perspective. And we're doing that without envisioning any decrease in services, having to cut things in any kind of significant way that would be affecting that. So that's kind of the overview of the municipal budget. Again, the full documents are available, the clerk's office, as well as I'm always available to answer questions. And I have one more slide, and there's the forgotten child, the water, oh, my formatting got screwed up, I'm sorry. The water and sewer utility budget. I want to just briefly, it's a much, it's a smaller budget, $4.9 million. Essentially, just to give you an overview, the revenue sources are water and sewer rents, which is another way of saying, we bill for the consumption of water, our residents and any of our businesses that use water, and so the revenue we get from that, as well as water and sewer connection fees and some other miscellaneous fees feed into our annual revenues. And our key appropriations, obvious ones, the employees and other expenses with running the department, but we have to have a licensed operator, which we have a contract service for, which the state requires, that you have to have a special license to run a water department, as well as, I'm just putting my final cheat sheet, we have to purchase the water that we sell, and they, to the homes in town. And we have to treat the sewage that comes out the other end, and you have to be paying Middlesex Water and the MC, Middlesex County Utilities Authority for that. And just to give you kind of a perspective, combined, just those two items, water purchase and sewage treatment, is 65% of this budget, is just those two items, which adds up to about $3.1 million, just to give you a sense of that, as well as we have the debt service to pay back on capital improvements we've done, which amounts to about $525,000. So that's just an overview. And I didn't want to leave you with that, because I know we've talked in the past about our issues in the department and what we're doing to address them. And we do have some important projects on the front burner this year. We are revising our rate and our fee, not to drastically increase anything, but to restructure it to meet more in line with industry standards. And that's something you'll be hearing about if you are in advance of any proposals coming forward. And we'd like to update some of our fee structures. We also, a very important point is our water quality accountability act compliance. We need to get our asset management plan up and running, which is going to cost some dollars to do, as well as to get fire hydrants and water valves tested throughout town. That's a very important project we have to move forward on. And lastly, we have initiative to address large customer-owned, meaning the borough doesn't own or the utility doesn't own, meters, get them tested and replaced as necessary. We have a big initiative that we're going to need to update our ordinance in order to execute that effort, but that's something we're working on this year. So that is my snapshot. And I will sit down now, unless I guess Councilor Mayor has any questions for you before I do that, and then I guess we go into the next. Because you want me to leave any one particular slide over?
No. Thank you, Borough Administrator. I know you've been working very hard on that. All right, we're going to move along here. Any public hearing on the budget that was just introduced? Okay, seeing none. May I have a motion to close the public hearing?
So move.
Second.
All right, next item. May I have a motion to adopt or reject the resolution to approve emergency temporary appropriations?
So move. Second.
Roll call, please.
Councilman Fine?
Yes.
Councilwoman Foster-Davlin?
Yes.
Councilman George?
Yes.
Councilman Hale?
Yes.
Councilwoman Welkowitz?
Yes.
All right, we're going to move on to the consent agenda.
Yes, so I also, I should have mentioned a thank you to the department heads who are here tonight, in the audience, to be here for this presentation. So I just wanted to say thank you. I am a state senator, and I appreciate being here.
And they are here in case there were any questions.
Maybe you can raise your hand.
So thank you, thank you.
They're all sitting on this side.
I know, I know, you're too. Okay. Consent agenda items, may I have a motion to adopt items 13 through 23?
So move.
Second.
Roll call, please.
Councilman Fine?
Yes.
Councilwoman Foster-Davlin?
Yes.
Councilman George?
Yes.
Councilman Hale?
Yes.
Councilwoman Welkowitz? I just want to point out that number 18, consent agenda item number 519158, is a resolution to award bid for improvements to several streets and improvements to various municipal parking lots. Thank you very much for adding that to the budget. And yes.
Okay, and one of those parking lots is infamous and famous, former's market parking.
Yes.
And mayor, and the library.
And the library, thank you.
And South Third, let's not forget that.
Okay, I'm appointing Robert Fector to the zoning board of adjustment. May I have a motion to confirm?
So move.
Second.
Roll call.
Councilman Fine?
Yes.
Councilwoman Foster-Davlin?
Yes.
Councilman George?
He's an excellent choice, also brings in some of the newer developments onto the manor, but excellent choice, yes.
Councilman Hale?
Yes.
Councilwoman Welkowitz?
I'm also delighted to welcome Bob Fector to the zoning board. He's served us very well on the redevelopment agency. He's very thorough, he gets very engaged with what's at hand, and we're delighted to have him. Thank you, yes.
Clerk, would you report on the election of volunteer firefighters?
I received notification from the Highland Park Volunteer Fire Department of the election of Quentin Moore and Petros Haxopoulos as volunteer firefighters.
Okay, may I have a motion to confirm?
Motion to confirm.
Second.
Roll call, please.
Councilman Fine?
Yes.
Councilwoman Foster-Davlin?
Yes.
Councilman George?
Did you notice we've been appointing firefighters almost every week, for every meeting? And a volunteer fire department engaged on their own, to do their own recruiting, their own public outreach to try and bring people in. And as you can see, it's been very successful. I think membership is up close to 30%, just in six months. So those of you who have the ordinance, take that back to the department. That self-help, I mean, we cooperated with you, in fact, with the self-help that you undertook. I think it's a good thing, it's brought good membership, I hope, yes.
Councilman Hale?
Yes.
Councilwoman Welkowitz?
I'm delighted to have you, volunteer firefighters, yes.
Okay, now we go into our final public discussion session. And Mr. Gross, you've been waiting very patiently. Thank you.
My name is Herb Gross, and I'm sorry that quite a few people have left. On Memorial Day, which is May 27, across the United States of America, our great country, every city, every state will be honoring Memorial Day. I have fought and served with your brothers and your sisters, your husbands, your sons and daughters. And I know what Memorial Day means to me. I am asking everyone in attendance here tonight, and the people watching the TV, to come out on Memorial Day in Highland Park here. This Memorial Day, I will be honored with my brothers and sisters from our post, American Legion Post out in Middletown, our DFW post out in Old Bridge, American Legion Post, American Legion Post, Evan Edison, South Plainfield, Long Brook. My brothers and my sisters will join us on a parade, which will begin towards 11:00 in the morning. I'm asking everyone in attendance here tonight, bring your children, bring your grandchildren. If there's any questions out there, we'll be able to go ahead and answer them. This Memorial Day, everyone should honor our great... This Memorial Day, everyone should honor our great heroes from the National Guard, my brothers and my sisters, who have given their lives out there to protect your freedom. And as I have said many times before, freedom is not free, you have earned it. Very shortly, many of you of the National Guard, the United States Air Force, the United States Navy, and the United States Marine Corps, they'll be coming home. And they're going to join us here in Highland Park and across the nation. Tomorrow they will be veterans. These veterans are, as I've said before, your brothers and your sisters, your husbands, your sons and your daughters. Not only support them on Memorial Day, there are three hundred and sixty-four days in a year. And every, every family should support the veterans.
Mrs. Bigford, do you have some mayhem you feel? I am here with a broken arm, elbow. I fell on a street in Highland Park that ever was neither inspected when it was built or was neglected. Because the sidewalk has been repaired. I don't know when, but it looked in good condition except the street that I was walking along, crossed by the driveway, a different border driveway, I passed or I thought I passed the driveway to continue and found that from the neighboring property, part of the driveway was about this much, about three inches, walking above. It wasn't level, it hasn't leveled off. So there was, when my foot got caught, then I fell. And I broke my arm, my elbow on the side. I'm too cold and wet to take my job anymore, I'm going to my soul. And I'm still dead and I'm waiting for two years. About two years ago, my neighbor's property, a three oh five Magnolia, had to have their water line replaced. And whoever did the work lifted a perfectly solid, a long, deep hole. And put it on the side while they did the repair work. When the repair work was done, they put it back. But they didn't level off the soil before. And so there's also a couple of inches. Now, I know it's there and I walk around it, but one of these days, God forbid, somebody else is going to fall.
Mrs. Bigford, I'm really sorry to hear about your phone. Our code enforcement officer is here. Did you get the addresses, Scott?
I'll take a look at the photo.
He'll take care of it.
I reported it to the police and they took the information. I don't know who the property owner is, who's responsible for it, but I just got a lawyer.
Yeah, so Scott, is this the first you're hearing about this? It's a code enforcement, it's the office that handles this. So he'll get out and take care of it.
Well, we told somebody then tomorrow as well.
Yeah, I don't know who you spoke to, but Chief, did anybody, did you hear anything about it at the police department?
No, you're right, uh, no mayor.
Can I have a row?
No mayor, but if she fell and the officer's helping, I'm sure there's a report generated. I can look up and get it to both boards and make a follow-up.
Yes, so especially since I bought the house in seventy-five and somewhere within the first ten, fifteen years I didn't live here. I got a notification from the borough that I owed them forty-nine dollars or something like that. Whatever the fine, completely to my son, having heroin crack in it.
Yeah. Mrs. Bigford, whenever you want to go walking, let me know and I'll be happy to walk with you.
Walk you with me.
Yeah, we'll take care of this.
Now, if somebody goes down the lawyer's thorough avenue, I don't appreciate why.
You take mine? Oh, thank you. Thank you. Thank you. Okay, any other public discussion?
My name is Jessica Hudson, I'm here for the community forum. And I know I'm going to really have to go with the community forum, which is a little long. I just wanted to follow up on a couple of, I appreciated the open from Councilman Hale and also from Chief Abrams. I wanted to just ask, I know that there was a consensus at the last committee forum that it'd be important to have regular community forums. And so I wanted to know when the next community forum will be held and what could be its focus?
So we actually talked a little about Chief, do you want to address that?
Still trying to figure out the rhythm of things.
No, are you coming up here, Sophie?
Sure. Is that loud enough? I need a microphone.
Yes.
So still trying to get the rhythm of things. Unfortunately, as much as we'd like to get everybody involved all the time, there's me and four things that you don't agree. So I think we probably record off four times a year. We can get together and do something like that. Captain Corbella and I were speaking yesterday and today and I know we want to get benchmarks for the next meeting. We're trying to develop that stuff while we are running other meetings and getting other business done. We have opportunities to get done. It's definitely, not a back burner, it's definitely something we want to do again. We actually really enjoyed ourselves at the meeting. It was nice to get out, meet everyone and talk to people and listen firsthand to some of the stuff that was coming out. And I hope that some of the stuff we gave back was helpful and heartening to everybody who was there.
So Chief, we've gone to strive for doing this quarterly. We just did one in April.
Yeah.
So let's try to target the next one for, does it make, Jessica, do you think it makes sense to do one in the summer? Do we have enough people here?
I think it would be nice to do one in October when people are not on vacation.
Councilwoman Foster-Dublin, just wait a second.
I think we're trying to, or do we have a lot of people in September? But I'm not sure. So should that happen, that would be?
I was just curious about, is anything in the public?
We could try, I'll be there if people are there, great. If not, then it'll be a short meeting. If that's, I mean, we can start. I don't want to push it too far ahead, but you know. I get a lot of people aren't going to be around, I won't change plans, you know, for that. But at the same time, we can figure something else.
If the school's starting September and people are on to that this September, then perhaps we can look toward September, which would be in the next quarter, right? July, August, September?
Yeah, we're moving forward with this. I know I'm going to be meeting with the different commissions. Maybe we can throw out some dates and offer our heads together and something that works for everybody. There's three other commissions I don't know. We've tried that way and people weren't good. That's not fair.
Thank you. Thank you both.
Hi, we've been here a while, so I'm going to get really quick. So there we go, fifty's near me. I just have a quick question as to the bias reporting. It was kind of just, it was briefly discussed at the community forum. It's been discussed here. But according to the website for Highland Park PD, there has not been a single report of bias that has been confirmed following submitted complaints in the last eight years for the general. And I'm just curious as to when a more, you know, accessible reporting system will be put in place on the website? And when will, if possible, a council or a community be involved in potentially having a little bit of oversight, whatever that could look like, in biased reports that are made? And kind of on top of that as well, as I already mentioned, I appreciate it being mentioned earlier. But what is the timeline for introducing a more robust data collection system in Highland Park PD so that we can more easily create these, you know, the reports that were sort of mentioned in the community forum?
This is a good question, so if you get Chief, I'm going to ask you to stand up.
Stay close, I'm going to need you to answer those questions with me again.
Oh.
There's a couple. Let's start with the last piece, first the data collection. So we are looking at ways to collect more data that's more useful and then we can collect stuff like some other stuff I was bringing today, which is important information but not useful for what you want. The problem we're having with that Councilman Hale, we're up for the programs talking to each other, is the way that our computer system is set up, it does a lot of stuff in aggregate, not individual. So we're trying to get the computer to spit out more individual information. I don't know what that's going to look like when it's done, the company's working on it, everything that you want that's different, costs money. These are excuses, I understand. But we're trying to get to the spot where we can give that kind of information now. I don't know how long it's going to take. I don't want to say, oh yeah, we'll get it done in a month. Then it takes us half a year because things happen. I can promise you that we're working on it. I can promise you that it's a priority. I don't want to give you a false sense of it's going to be by the end of the summer or by, you know, by Thanksgiving or something like that. But it is, it is something that we definitely, you know, we want to get those numbers out there for a couple of reasons. One, the main reason for me is if there's a problem, I want to know about it now so I can start fixing it. You know, especially on an individual level. And if not, I want everybody to know that there's not. So the faster we get the data out there, the better it is for everybody. What else?
The bias reporting, how do you assess a lot of the bias reporting on the website?
Okay, so a new policy just came out from the A D G's office. There actually is on the website, or if it's not there, it's going to be very, very soon, a way to record biases. They're tying in bias incident, bias crime a little tighter, a little more of an overlap, which gives us more of an opportunity to get involved in these things. Sometimes, as unfair as it might sound, sometimes you run into some First Amendment issues with some of the bias reporting that we get.
I should be interested, not bias reporting, but if somebody experiences different things.
Oh, okay, so that would go to Officer Professional Standards or, you know, we want TV here at IA or Internal Affairs. That stuff is out there that you can do it, anybody can walk in our headquarters anytime. Don't have to give anything, all you have to say is I'd like to file a complaint. And you can do it either by phone, by email, in person, or if you want, nothing other than to be able to write it out, send it in the mail, you can come to the dispatcher, you can get it packaged. There's an envelope, directions, what you can do, what you're entitled to and not entitled to, and a form that you can fill out. And you send that in, you receive that form, that trigger automatically triggers a investigation.
Sorry, has there been thought into digitizing the forms for the statutes?
Not that I know of, I don't think that's impossible as long as the lab will do it, have to see what moves here. But that is something we can do.
I think the last question was just to give you a trust, because all of the things that happened in the past years, like they've done that for internal affairs, or what community? If there is a new rule to stay for trial, like I know it's.
We don't, right now, we don't have community oversight. Internal affairs are one of the sections of the police department, so I'm getting more into it, learning more at that is. It's out there, we provide information certain number of times a year, but it's sterilized. It doesn't have any visual, it's a completely hacked function. As far as overset or that, there, you know, we do what we do in-house and then we have to report to the county and the state. So our oversight right now is a funny process, obviously, it's the agency. I don't see that changing anytime soon. There is nothing that I know of, oh, it's probably not doing or anything with any kind of civilian oversight. So for right now, we're just, you know, claims come in, it's going to sign to a proper investigator, it's a best.
Could there be community oversight, like to other firms? I know it's.
I, yeah, I don't know.
So, so let me help him out with that. I know the Human Relations Commission has been talking about some kind of expenditure role that they can have. And I'm sure the Councilman Hale will be the one to work on that.
Absolutely, and as the chief mentioned, there are three committees that, the Immigration and Refugee Committee, the Highland Park Equity Committee, and the Human Relations Committee that all sort of have an interest in this area, all sort of have an expertise in this area. And we want to try and work with all of those committees as we're developing with the chief and with the mentor, Chief Spurle, those sort of benchmarks and those sort of ideas. And so in terms of the specifics of the oversight for reporting, I certainly think that's something that we can look at, something that we can put in that sort of plan. But again, it's a process to try and make sure that we have all of those protections that you spoke about and all the input from the various communities.
Thank you, and thank you, Chief.
Mayor, yes, there is just one thing that, as we look at our, to develop our new website, that we're looking at what kind of forms that we can put on there to make it more, much more accessible for everyone.
Good point. Thank you, Chief. Okay.
Hi, Danstrom Cornell, Harbor Street, sorry to be very quick. I just want to say as far as the reporting goes, there really needs to be a anonymous reporting web portal. And I know that that leads to a lot of frivolous complaints, but frankly, I think that's the cost of doing business when you have a police department that frankly has a history of bias that Highland Park has. So I mean, I know there's, that would be a lot of stuff to sit through, but I don't think that is a valid objection to having something like that, given the history of it.
Thank you. Anybody else? All right, then may I have a motion to adopt or reject the going into executive session to discuss litigation, which will be followed by a second motion for conference.
Sorry.
Roll call, please.
Councilman Fine?
Yes.
Councilwoman Foster-Dublin?
Yes.
Councilman George?
Yes.
Councilman Hale?
Yes.
Councilwoman Welkowitz?
Yes.
And may I have a motion to adjourn to conference meeting? Thank you, everybody.